Hello and welcome to this evening's regular city council meeting of May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. I've called the meeting to order and I would like to invite up MPD Chaplain Ron McIntyre. And he will give our invocation and Councilmember Gettle if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I do want to say, Ron, thank you for being here. He came because our pastor that was going to pray tonight ended up needing to leave town, which is perfectly fine. We understand that and Ron being our MPD Champ- Champ- Chaplain said, yes, I'll come. So, thank you very much. So, please rise if you're able.
Okay, let's go with the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we invite your Holy Spirit to guide our city council meeting tonight. May our discussions be filled with truth, transparency, and dedication to public trust. We ask that your wisdom will guide our judgments and remind us to uphold integrity with our decisions. We pray that all our decisions serve the greater good for all citizens we are elected to serve. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join with me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you Chaplain McIntyre and Councilmember Gettle. That'll take us to roll call. Vanessa, please.
Councilmember Gettle.
Present.
Councilmember Noor.
Present.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade.
Present.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you Vanessa. All right, that takes us to Proclamations, Acknowledgements, Awards, and Presentations. Tonight, we have none. That'll move us on to the report from the mayor. Council, do you have items to report? Yes, Councilmember Lehman.
No, the city does have, thank you. The city has a weekly newsletter. And so, if you don't know and you would like to receive that newsletter, you can go to the city website and then go to Community Enrichment. And there's a way that you can add yourself to receive the weekly city newsletter. I'd like to invite everyone to the Veteran Memorial Ribbon Cutting this Saturday, May twenty-fourth. It's at eight-thirty in the morning and it's at Copper Sky. It's gonna be a really great event, so please join us for that. Bob and I had the honor of meeting with some very special people on May thirteenth, and that is one of our Boy Scout troops. They were very impressive with some amazing questions and they were very attentive and respectful. And it's always great to be around youth who really strive to be amazing humans. We talked about the importance of cooling centers and caring for our families and our neighbors and our pets. And it was just a really inspiring and beautiful time with them. Our youth in Maricopa are quite impressive. And then I just want to invite people to participate in the Penal County Early Childhood Survey. I definitely don't want the city of Maricopa parents to be left out of this survey. They're assessing the need for early childhood services. So, you can just literally Google Penal County Early Childhood Survey. It'll pop right up for you. It's a short survey and again, I really appreciate if all our families would participate in that survey. And then lastly, I just wanted to talk about the safety issues here in Maricopa that have been issue the last couple of weeks. Safety has been a point of pride here in Maricopa and I have been very concerned, alarmed, and disheartened at the more than half a dozen shootings in the past two weeks in our community, especially since they are on the heels of two road rage shootings and the shocking shooting of Officer Sanchez just a short two and a half months ago. A school lockdown and neighborhood streets with yellow tape is not the norm for our city. Families having to stay in their homes during investigation and children exposed to violence is unacceptable for our community. I want to thank our professional and amazing officers for their quick response and timely arrests in every single one of these incidents. Thank you so much to our MPD. The main commonality in all of these shootings in Maricopa, with the exception of the two on three forty-seven, were the relationships between those involved. In every incident, the people knew each other. In some cases, the people involved were immediate family members committing acts of violence against each other. None of the shootings were related to each other. They were standalone incidents and they just happened to take place one after another and it is all very sad. I just wanted to share six proactive solutions, some of which you can participate in. The first one is to get involved in your Neighborhood Watch. There's an active Neighborhood Watch program in Tortosa and the villages. And Jim's gonna talk a little bit more about opportunities for Neighborhood Watch tonight. Number two is we have coordinated a law enforcement coordination meeting scheduled for June eighteenth. This meeting was scheduled right after the first shooting on three forty-seven. And so, it's a very timely meeting. And the people that are going to be invited to that meeting are ADOT, City of Maricopa Police Department, Arizona Department of Public Safety, Maricopa Association of Government, AAA, Penal County Sheriff Tople, Penal County Patrol Posses, Maricopa County Sheriff Jerry Sheridan, Maricopa County Patrol Posse, Governor Lewis, Chief of Police Jesse Crabtree, and Acting Commander Patrol Division William Lewis, the Arizona Rangers, and the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. So, we're really looking at a regional effort to make sure that our residents are safe in our community and on the three forty-seven. So, we're looking forward to a really helpful meeting that day. The next intervention is an increase in patrols in the neighborhoods affected by these shootings. Number four is the chief did meet with the directors of the HOAs on May fourteenth, where most of the shootings are happening. Number five is we do have clock- flock cameras in place to help with arrests. And then number six is there's a Block Watch email. It's block dot watch at maricopa dash az dot gov. So, if you noticed anything in your community, it's the whole see something, say something. If you have any concerns about anything in your neighborhoods, please utilize that email. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lehman. Councilmember Marsh.
Good evening. Tomorrow, Wednesday, is Emergency Services for Children's Day, recognizing fire and medical departments readiness to care for children in emergency situations. It takes special equipment and special training to handle babies, infants, toddlers, tweens, and teens. They're different from adults. Six Arizona departments have been recognized as prepared for caring for children. And I'm proud to say, Maricopa Fire and Medical is one of those six, along with Gila River, Sun City West, Prescott Valley, Sacaton, and Sanders. Does anybody know where Sanders is? I've had a busy couple of weeks since the last meeting. On May eighth, I attended Maricopa Chamber of Commerce Breakfast at Mandy's Wine Bar. It was an excellent meeting. On the twelfth, there was a groundbreaking at Saddleback Village. It's a two-hundred-plus affordable homes community built by Dominion. It's just west of Home Depot. I had a Penal County Water Augmentation Authority Board Meeting and a Penal Partnership Water Resources Committee Meeting, well-attended. And my friend Jake Lender King from Global is there at both meetings. And we've been watching the water bills going through the state legislature on both committees. And we've been able to remove the poison pill that one wacky legislator had put into a stupid amendment in a bill that county supports. And I attended on the fourteenth a Maricopa Memorial Task Force meeting led by the mayor. We're making plans to create a memorial honoring our city's founders and going forward honoring key contributors to our city's future. And we hope to partner with the Maricopa Historical Society on that ongoing project. Mayor, that's about it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Marsh. Councilmember Noor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to thank Councilmember Lehman for her comments on public safety and for leading the charge on that. I couldn't agree more about the importance it is and how we want our community members to feel safe and also how appreciative we are of the MPD for everything they've done. And my daughter was actually in the school that went on lockdown and heard the gunshots. And she was so relieved the next day when I could tell her that they caught the guy. Like, you know, I was like, hey, I just want to let you know, they caught the guy. And she was like, oh, they did? And that's because of the work of MPD getting that out, working with the other agencies across the state. And it's truly amazing that they've been able to follow up on all of these and catch the perpetrators. On a lighter note, Councilmember Lehman also talked about the Veterans Memorial unveiling on Saturday morning. But right before that, you can run in a five K that ACP Painting sponsors and it's a fundraiser for veterans. And so, I highly encourage anyone who wants to get out and run on Saturday morning to sign up for that and then stay for the Veterans Memorial unveiling. It should be a great morning. And the other thing is the city just released the signups for the Summer Reading Program, which is a fantastic program. And so, I encourage everyone, adults and children, it's for everybody, sign up and participate in that great, fantastic program where you can earn prizes and read. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Noor. We'll go to Councilmember Manfredi.
I'd like to thank Councilmember Noor for what she was saying earlier about our police and our community. You know, I did not know that block dot watch at maricopa dash az dot gov was an email. Thank you. I had no idea, but I wrote it down and I'll share that with folks because if they see something in their neighborhood, they should report it. Over the last couple of weeks, we've been busy. Tomorrow, actually, I have a Transportation Policy Committee with MAG up it in the valley. But we as a, not as a council, but a couple of folks in the, in the audience, as well as the mayor, myself, Katie over there, went up to Bullhead City. If you haven't been to Bullhead City, don't bother. I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm just joking. It's so far away, but it's a nice place. But we went up to Bullhead City and I spent some time up there. Four hours of driving for two minutes of speaking, which was fun in itself to drive home four hours. So, we stayed a couple of days and I lost money at the casino and that's why I was saying, don't bother going because casinos are not fun. But we stayed there and had fun. But the best part about it is I almost had a tear in my eye because the way the ADOT board and staff was talking about the three forty-seven widening project and how they all know how important it is and we're really beating it into them to understand why it's so important to us. So, if you haven't seen it, there's a link to take a survey for the five-year plan. Please take that survey and fill it out. We are the number one, the three forty-seven is the number one feedback that they're getting for the survey. It's a statewide survey, so it's a great thing. And if you can all fill it out, have your spouses fill it out, your kids that are driving, everybody that you know that drives a three forty-seven, fill it out. I'd love to have sixty thousand of them filled out. Currently, I think it's six hundred for three forty-seven, something in that range. Please fill them out. Yesterday, I attended a meeting for Central, sorry, no, um, RTAC, World Transportation Advisory Committee and we were talking about money and state money and rural money and how there is none. I know that makes sense, right? You have a meeting to talk about not having money. But that's what we're having the conversation about and how at the state level, there's no real big surplus, there's no extra money out there. So, after the meeting, I talked to someone and they were like, they wanted to learn more, a little bit about our half-cent sales tax. So, I had a conversation with them outside of that by phone. And we talked about it and they're like, I think it's, you're gonna see it helping a lot more in the state of Arizona because so many local communities are sitting here with so many needs and so little funding. So, we're sitting here, you know, we're trendsetters, I guess, when you look at it. Other, other cities are upping their sales tax for just general funds and we're actually designing it for an important thing and that's the transportation needs of our residents. So, thank you for the time and.
Thank you, Councilmember Manfredi. Vice Mayor Wade.
Thank you, Ma'am. I had to say one short offer. Friday, I attended the graduation ceremony of the Be Awesome graduates. It was approximately ten, ten, fifteen children ranging in age of six to about twelve. And they received a certificate and a little trophy. And they were really excited about the whole activity. So, I just wanted to share amongst all the other things that are going on in the community, there are some kids who get excited about a little certificate and a little trophy and they did a good job.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, just a couple of things. Want to talk about the Heritage Academy Art Show? I went to that, over two thousand pieces. This little Heritage Academy had two thousand pieces done by all of their students. And let me tell you, these weren't just like going to an elementary school and seeing your child's artwork. These were phenomenal. If you're curious, you can go to my mayor page and see some examples. I understand in that program at that school, there's a waiting list to get into that class. It's so impressive. Also, went to the shred event with my grandbabies. They thought they weren't gonna love it, but they ended up loving it because they got to see this giant truck take a huge bin of paper and just shred, 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 shred. So, they thought it was great and I love the fact that the city helped put that on. It was a wonderful event. And then the Maricopa Orchestra in Chorus for Mother's Day Concert, wonderful event as well. We have some very talented people artistically and definitely in the performing art arena as well. And then I also attended the Maricopa Police Department HOA meeting, which is a meeting that Jim puts on. And what a phenomenal opportunity to communicate. You know, communication is always the hardest thing to do. And so, if you can pull all of the HOA directors, all of the chairs, all of the people along with your MPD and you can share important information and then you ask them to share that on, amazing. And so, there were some very good presentations and some really good information shared at that event. And then also, I went to the MUSD, first ever in the city of Maricopa, K-eight groundbreaking. I'm telling you, if you want to know how to put on a good groundbreaking, go attend one of MUSD's groundbreakings, phenomenal. But they had the high school bands there, they had the ROTC there with the flag. Wonderful and just a wonderful presentation of what is going to come there in that Sorrento area, which is wonderful, in that whole eastern area of Maricopa. Last but not least, I have to talk about, well, there's two things. I have to talk about three forty-seven, you know that. But let me tell you a fun story first. I actually went to Career Day now, I guess it's a week ago Tuesday, and third graders. And I'm gonna tell you, you'd be shocked how much third graders know. So, they were able to answer, ask me any question they want and I love that. And I have so many fun stories, but I can only tell you one tonight, otherwise they'd kill me. So, this one story, this one darling lady, young lady, said to me, what is the most difficult decision you've ever had to make as mayor? And I said, ooh, that's easy. If I said to you all, State Route three forty-seven, how many of you would know what I mean? And they're all like, oh, 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 you know? And you're like, okay, they're gonna raise their hand because they, they want to look like they know what they're talking about, but mm-mm. They knew what they were talking about. When I started to interact with them, they're like, heavy traffic, traffic congestion, unfortunately, loss of lives, so many crashes, we have to do something about it. Now, where do they get that information? From their parents, right? But I told this story at the State Transportation Board Meeting last Friday and I think that they really enjoyed the story because it just tells you how this topic, this one topic in the city of Maricopa impacts everybody who lives here. So, it was a great story, I loved it. But at the State Transportation Board Meeting in Bullhead City, we had seven people in person from the city of Maricopa to talk. And we could have had six to ten online, but we decided to just go with the in-person conversations this time and they were phenomenal. These folks, and only two of them, well, two are councilmembers, myself and Manfredi was there and then Katie being an employee. But the rest were all citizens that are continuing to support and advocate. And so, if you have any interest at all in going to the really big meeting, June twentieth, talk to me because if you want to talk, I want you to be there and I want to help you understand how you can contribute to the conversation. Wonderful and I think these seven people, but really, you know, there are probably fifteen to twenty people who help us on a regular basis share the information. But the good news was, as part of the public hearing, they shared an opportunity for State Route three forty-seven to be in the five-year plan. We were all excited and delighted. But what it's gonna take is for all of our residents to fill out the public comment form and share with them your personal story on why this needs to be in there. There's still some discussion that has to happen and we're focusing on getting, engaging our residents even stronger now that we're at this point. So, you have to do that by May twenty-third. You can go to my mayor page. I think we're gonna be issuing a newsletter shortly, probably today, that links you directly to that form as well. It's really important, as many people as possible would be fantastic. So, lastly, you all may or may not know Stephen Baker. He served in the first city council in two thousand three to two thousand and seven and I'm sad to say that we have lost Stephen Baker. He passed away in early May in Safford, Arizona. So, if you don't mind, just let's give them a moment of silence for their family and pray for their peace. Thank you very much and I'd just like to close with have a great Memorial Day weekend. Be safe, be safe. You know DPS is going to be out there on three forty seven, so be safe, drive safe. Thank you, and that's it. That'll take us to the report from the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, just one thing real quick tonight. Um, first of all, mayor, in reference to your, your comment about, uh, the link that is posted on our Facebook page, social media page, about, is about an hour ago. So if that makes it easier, by all means, uh, feel free to click on over there. Uh, the one thing I wanted to mention was a few of our staff yesterday had an opportunity to meet with the president and CEO of the Union Pacific Railroad. Um, a great opportunity for us to talk with a partner that we don't get a lot of face-to-face time with. Union Pacific has notoriously been an agency that is, or an entity that is, um, afar, is based in Omaha and often keep their people in Omaha and, and difficult for us to get projects to move along. Uh, we had a great conversation with, with the president, with their intergovernmental staff and a lot of their local team and we expect to see some, some good projects moving forward with them. Talked a lot about our future business park and the need for coordination as we have a rail spur in that area to, to bring jobs to Maricopa. We talked about our pedestrian bridge, which project starts off with a pre-construction meeting this week. So we're exciting, excited to see that getting started and really, um, took the opportunity to talk with both Union Pacific as well as Sandra Watson, the president and CEO of the Arizona Commerce Authority also, uh, at the same table. And so a great opportunity for Maricopa to be heard, for us to, to stay on the radar and hopefully get our projects moving even faster. So excited for that and, and all that we have going on.
Thank you, city manager. All right, that'll take us to the call to the public and let me read just to you quickly. The procedure to follow if you address the council, our council requests that you express your ideas in three minutes or less and refrain from any personal attacks or derogatory statements about any city employee, a fellow citizen, or anyone else, whether they're in the audience or not. The mayor will limit discussion whenever they deem such an action is appropriate for the proper conduct of the meeting. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of council may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the council, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of council shall not discuss or take legal action on any matters during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. So this evening, I have three speaker cards, we'll start with that and then I will open it up to the floor to approach the podium. First is Priscilla Benke.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, it's good to see you again. Um, I've been working with youth and families here in Maricopa for twenty years now and I've seen a lot of really good, positive things, but I've also seen some rough stuff too. A young man who had participated in the rec center had come from a risky home and was continuing to live out risky lifestyles. He'd been homeless and was looking for a place to hang out during the summer days and he kept, um, he continued in our office to make unfortunate decisions. I dropped him off at Bashes with an updated stack of resumes and wished him luck. There was a dust storm that night. I ran into him later that fall, he'd found a job with a landscaper. I sometimes wonder how he's doing now, but I really wonder how life could have been different for him in Maricopa if there had been programs and services that opened, like Open Arms Vocational Center, had been available to him. Shelter, caring men who could offer guidance, mentoring and accountability when those men in his life had failed. And hope for a future with a purpose. I'm grateful for the invitation to help Manfredi, Learman and Mrs. Anderson build this program and I thank the city for considering this innovative lease land agreement to help this get up and running and I ask that you approve this agenda tonight. And, um, if any team can do it, it's this team and I know it sounds like I'm saying that because I'm on it and that's fair and true. Now, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, next up is Nicholas, um, Seizemec. Hopefully I said that right, if not, please help me out, but please come forward.
Hello? Real quick, I just wanted to let you know, um, it's Sizemore.
Oh, thank you very much.
It's all right.
I appreciate that.
So I should have, I should have been a bit more prepared.
That's all right, you take your time.
Good evening, mayor and council members and a good evening to everyone here tonight. My name is Nicholas Sizemore. I'm here tonight representing teens from Be Awesome Youth Coalition. We're a local nonprofit that aims to help create confident, connected and successful youth in Maricopa. I wanted to take a minute to share something that we're really excited about, our upcoming teens event Nerf and Surf. Nerf and Surf is free for the first fifty registrants. We'll have Nerf battles, color wars, swimming, pizza and a great atmosphere for teens. It's going to be a great way to beat the Arizona heat. I want to give a quick shout out to the Community of Hope Church and Councilmember Nor for sponsoring this event. Thank you so much for your contributions and we are also asking the community to help us make it an unforgettable evening. If you have teens at home, send them over for an awesome night. If you believe in supporting youth, sponsor a spot and help a huge part of our community feel seen and supported. Just twenty-five dollars helps give someone a night to remember. This might just seem like a fun night, but for some of us, it means everything. Thank you for listening and I hope we'll see you at Nerf and Surf.
Thank you, Nicholas. You did a great job, phenomenal, thank you very much. Next up is Tori Anderson.
Mayor Smith and council, thank you. Um, I have the amazing honor and privilege to be able to serve on the board of directors for Open Arms Vocational Living. But let me explain to you why. Twenty-five years ago, as a teacher at Maricopa High School, I had a young man walk into my classroom before school started. It was like an hour before school started and we didn't even serve breakfast then. So twenty-five years ago, he came in and he says, Maestro, I need to speak with you. I said, okay. He said, I don't know what I'm going to do after school. He said, my mom kicked me out this morning and I have no place to go. I said, we'll take care of it. So I went and got him breakfast, went to the administrators and the principal and we took care of him with what we had. Twenty-five years ago, we weren't even a city. So there were no services available, but as a school district, we wrapped around him and embraced him. Today, twenty-five years later, we have the opportunity to make a difference in every young man's life. We've made a difference in our young women's life with against abuse and handling our domestic violence and sexual assault. However, our young men are hanging there and as a mother of three sons, it concerns me. Just this year alone, that we know of, between Desert Sunrise High School and Maricopa High School, we had twenty homeless young men. That is twenty too many. That is only twenty that we know of. I haven't even checked with the other high schools yet. Now, we do take care of them as a school district, but they're still couch surfing, they're still sleeping in the culverts, they're still sleeping under the bridges and you know why? Because they want to stay in Maricopa. They want to stay in school. They want to become better. They want tomorrow to be better than today. I want tomorrow to be better than today. I am asking you to please support Agenda Item eight point four. And I did check on there, I know you can't ask questions during call to the public. I'm happy to come back during that agenda item if you have questions, but I am passionate as well as the rest of the board of directors. Vince Manfredi, Amber, thank you, Priscilla, we make a good team because we care what happens to our youth because that's our future. Can you imagine if these twenty young men continue to stay homeless? How many children would they have? I know my time's up.
You have one more minute.
Okay, good. What will happen? Will it be twenty homeless families by then or maybe forty? We need to bring attention to this and handle and support and bring in programs before our homeless population grows anymore. Not just youth, but we do have other homeless population. And this is a way for us to start. This land lease would give us the opportunity to start the program small and build it and make sure that the foundation is strong. So I'm just asking you to please vote in favor of that and we will come back and do presentations on where we're going. We have a great group of nonprofits because we believe it's going to take a village and so we've already reached out. We have about six nonprofits that are going to be supporting this program, Against Abuse is one of them, Dove's Network is one of them, Be Awesome. We've got churches that are also involved, uh, but it's still going to take all of us. The schools are definitely involved. So if you have questions, I'm here, I'll be here the rest of the night, but I hope you'll vote in favor of the lease land agreement.
Thank you very much. And we will give you an opportunity since you turned in a speaker card for the agenda item as well, so please, if you need to, come back. Okay, uh, anyone from the audience like to approach the podium? That's all of my speaker cards? Yes, please come forward. State your name, I know who you are, but.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. My name is Jim Divenesia. I'm the Community Support Specialist with the Police Department and I made a list so I can kind of keep within three minutes. But, uh, Amber, I appreciate the, uh, the nudge about Neighborhood Watch and, uh, I think the reality is that there is so much misinformation about Neighborhood Watch. What is Neighborhood Watch? Uh, it is not block captains going up and down the street or riding in a car with, uh, with their, their clipboard, uh, checking doors and doing things like that. It's not that and it's much, much simpler. And I think to address it, Chief Goodman and I last week talked about, let's have an informational meeting for Neighborhood Watch. I've had, I think, three of them before, but we're going to, we scheduled it more sooner than later. It's going to be for next Saturday over at the library, May thirty-first, two-thirty to four o'clock. Uh, we'll have, um, a PowerPoint presentation just to kind of give an idea of what Neighborhood Watch is, but it's going to be information and there'll be a chance for Q and A. Uh, Chief Goodman will be coming and we'll, we'll probably have some other MPD staff at the same time too. Uh, I'm from New Jersey and New Jersey, you don't have block walls like what we have here. You have no fences or you have chain link fences. You know your neighbors, everybody knows you, everybody has that sense of community. Here, we have something different. We are a community, but we have those walls that block us and I think that has really reduced the, the contact that we have with one another. But even in spite of that, there are different ways of breaking through, as simple as a phone tree or as simple as telling your neighbor, I'm going out, I'm going out, can you do this for me? Or check on that package or hey, your garage door is open. Simple, simple things that we could all do that we'll discuss again on the, um, at the meeting on May thirty-first. I know I'm running out of time. Second thing is, we have, um, uh, I had a discussion with Lieutenant Mark Casey about putting information on the city website or the police department Facebook page, uh, specific to Neighborhood Watch. What it is, what, uh, what are some of the steps you could take? I have a resource list that we could also include, the one that I had sent, uh, that we could also include in there too, um, but have a separate page. So if anybody wants to click on the city website, what's Neighborhood Watch? Here's the information. So we have that sense of, of, of community. Uh, there's also a, uh, on the city website to request, uh, outreaches by the police department. Fire department has it, now the police department has it. If Neighborhood Watch startup meetings are going to be coming or if there's HOAs or if there's local, uh, local groups in the community that want police, yes, that want police, uh, presence to join them, to be part of the community, it's also on the website. We just started that. Uh, the block dot watch.
Jim, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to stop.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much, just have to be consistent.
Yes, thank you. Uh, May thirty-first, all right, at two-thirty to four, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to approach the podium? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, or excuse me, the call to the public. That'll take us to our cons, oh, that'll take us to our consent agenda. Tonight, we have items seven dot one through seven dot seven and I have no speaker cards for the consent agenda. Council, what items do you have that you'd like to talk about or pull, any? Seeing none, may I have a motion? So moved by Councilmember Manfredi, do I have a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Wade. Any additional opportunity for another question or conversation? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to our regular agenda item, eight dot one, and this is an item that is a presentation or a, an appointment by Councilmember Marsh to the vacancy on a committee.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I'd like to appoint Laura Oliveri to the Cultural Arts Committee. Um, she's been on the, the committee for, for the past four years and she's really the keel on the boat for that committee. And, uh, I, I thank her very much for serving.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions for Councilmember Marsh? Moved to approve by Councilmember Manfredi, do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Nor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. I don't think Laura's here tonight, but congratulations Laura and thank you, Councilmember Marsh. All right, that'll take us on to Agenda Item eight dot two, which is a presentation from Global Water.
Good evening, Mayor Smith, Vice Mayor Wade, council members and members of the public. We're going to see if I can get this thing to work. You just click the middle button. Hey, there we go, awesome. Well, good evening, my name is Andrew Miller, I'm the regional manager here with Global Water Resources, along with my boss and supervisor, Vice President, General Manager, John Corwin. Uh, we are here to present our annual presentation to the city regarding the MOU that we have established and, uh, this is the high-level overview of what we'll be running through. I'm fronting the, the beginning of it and then, uh, John will be stepping in, uh, midway through to walk through some of the additional things such as the rate case and water resource update. So obviously, the city of Maricopa has had a longstanding, uh, relationship with Global Water and partnering to provide water and wastewater services. As part of our memorandum of understanding, we do have this clause here regarding an annual report that we provide to the city. Uh, we do submit that report in paper to the, uh, city manager by May first of each year and then have this follow-up conversation to walk through some of the things, highlight different topics and such. Uh, and we're going to include a picture of this water tower as many times as we can because we absolutely love the unique opportunities that we have to partner with the city with that, uh, ground storage tank and then of course with Lakeview Park as well. I already said that part. There we go. So twenty twenty-four, walking through the numbers, uh, we added over thirteen hundred water connections in twenty twenty-four, uh, and thirteen hundred wastewater connections. Obviously, we see a lot of that growth going on at the different subdivisions as the city's continuing to expand. Uh, we saw three point one billion gallons of water pumped in the entirety of the last calendar year. But the really exciting part of that is that we recycled one point four billion gallons through our beneficial reuse program where we're sending it to the HOAs for irrigation and such. And we saw a deployment of twenty-six point two million dollars in capital expenditures and improvements. Uh, some of that is rehabbing and improving some of the existing, existing infrastructure, but then also building out to expand. And so we're going to walk through, uh, obviously, we keep growing. Uh, these are just a few of the highlights, uh, with, uh, Stonegate and Home Depot and Moonlight Ridge coming online here soon in the near future. They've got two model homes out there and so they're about to get going on that, they've got the lift station ready to go. And so looking at the potable water demands from August twenty-four, twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-one, demands were up thirty-seven percent. Um, and so you can see on that graph through June, July and August, just that escalation up into the right. Peak demand is now ten million gallons a day. Uh, we have sufficiency to meet that, uh, as you can see, but in the wastewater side as well, you saw twenty-one percent increase over that three-year period. Um, big takeaways, obviously, meeting all of those water and wastewater demands and growing responsibly. Seeing a sixty-eight percent increase in our groundwater use, but then again, that thirty-two percent recycled use, saving over a billion gallons of water. saving over a billion gallons of water a year. And really, the most exciting part in my mind is that we still have 60% of our designated assured water supply. And basically, that's the 100-year projection of we can sustain what we have, as well as what we're projecting. And so we still have a significant ceiling for growth that we're seeing consistently. But we do need to continue to be proactive. And so walking through some of the projects that this past year are allowing us to keep up with that demand and growth. The Sorrento Potable Water Well, we commissioned a well and a transmission line. It's running to our Ranch and Mirage Distribution Center. Rated for 1.1 million gallons a day. And remember, we're looking at peak demand of 10 million gallons a day. This allows for not only meeting additional growth, but it allows for resiliency as we need to do maintenance on some of the other wells. We can bring this one into rotation without really endangering everyone having the water that they need. So capacity as well as resiliency, a one-two punch there. And then this one was, again, the pictures are very telling there. Pictures worth a thousand words. On the left side, you can see the interior of our lift station there at our main campus. And on the right, in the middle there, is, once it was cleaned out, rehabbed, we did some surface patchwork. And the exciting part is that guy on the far right, installation of a new lift station screening mechanism that ever since, and there's the fun part of what it's trying to keep out. So obviously, all of our pumps, without sufficient screening, all of those rags get into the pumps. You have a lot of downtime, a lot of maintenance, a lot of added labor costs and replacement costs that really, if you have a sufficient screening system in place, you're going to have uptime. You're not going to have replacement costs. And it really does impact the wastewater treatment process. Wastewater plant is an active, living thing. We rely on the microbes in there to do their thing. And whenever they get these disruptions, you can really have not just mechanical issues, but biological issues as well. And so having this new discharge piping and the concrete restoration in tandem with that lift station screen really allows the system to do what it's designed to do. And that screen has been installed since November, and we have had zero downtime at the wastewater plant. So it's doing everything it was designed to do, which is very exciting. And then several of our lift stations, again, looking at the discharge piping on the lift stations as they're pushing things through the collection system. Lift stations exist to transport wastewater from the lowest point in the system up, and then allowing gravity to work the rest of the way down. And so the discharge piping on both Cobblestone and McDavid lift stations, we're experiencing some degradation. There's a lot of hydrogen sulfide gas in those environments that eats away pretty much everything. And so we were able to, at both of these facilities, do some clean-out, some replacement, and ensure that those sites are going to continue to work for the growth that we're having. And then looking at some of the 2025 capital projects that we have going on. Obviously, with the expansion in Lowe's and Reinsland Common areas, we had significant water and wastewater infrastructure we had to install, and an additional lift station to help service that area and continue moving things through the collection system. And then at the main water reclamation facility, we also have two major projects, among others, but these are the ones we're going to highlight. The UV disinfection system, it's a multi-phase rehabilitation process. We utilize the UV to disinfect the waste stream that's coming out in liquid form from the wastewater treatment plant. It's the final step in the treatment before it's discharged or reused. And a UV system is beneficial because it is very effective whenever it's working properly. But looking at our existing SCADA systems, there was some opportunities for improvements with some alarm systems, some visibility into how the system is properly performing, as well as efficient use of the energy and scaling up or down the intensity of the UV as was needed through the demand. And so that project is ongoing. It was began last year. It should be wrapping up this year, and we've already seen significant improvements on our disinfection processes. And then the wastewater treatment clarifier recoding. We have three clarifiers at our main wastewater plant, and those assist with settling out the solids and separating the liquids, and they go through separate treatment systems after that. And after some inspection of them last year, we realized we needed to bring them down in sequence and clean them out, do a recoding, replace some of the gears and different things that are just worn down over time. And so the two, clarifiers one and two, were completed last year. And then we sort of halted as we were experiencing increased flows. And then we're getting ready to kick off next month. The draining and cleaning out of Clarifier 3, and that'll be wrapping up ahead of monsoon season, so we don't have too much overlap there, and all of them are able to proceed. And then the automatic transfer switch upgrades, we call them ATS units. We are doing some rehabilitation on the units that are there on-site at the water reclamation facility. These are basically, what they say, automatic transfer switches. So whenever we lose our primary power source, these equipment pieces are designed to automatically flip a switch, turn our generators on, get everything switched over to run on that power. Provides opportunity for us to respond to situations where maybe it was just a fault, something that went wrong, and then we can collaborate with ED3 or do some internal work to bring the equipment back to where it should be. And it really does, again, allow for these processes to continue in the event of emergency. And then also, we have some additional improvements we are doing at the reclamation facility related to the headwork screenings, how we're handling our solids, and some of the odor control mechanisms. Again, the wastewater process, there is a lot of hydrogen sulfide gas that's involved just through how the processes work. And so looking at mitigating those odors, both for the safety of the employees, but also as good neighbors, because we do have communities on the backsides of the property there, and making sure that they are able to walk outside and not have to deal with that hydrogen sulfide gas. And then the last, but most exciting part, the Southwest Plant recommissioning. Obviously, we have had the lift station out there, and we've been doing a vault and haul process. And we recently got a packaged plant that would help us sort of accommodate some of the expansion that's been going on out there. But we're right in the thick of revitalizing that Southwest plant to service all of the growth that's going on out there. And we're looking to have that commissioned in Q4 of 2025 and be ready for the explosive growth that's happening out there, but also any additional things that are going on. And I lied, I said last but not least, this is the last but not least. So this Sorrento booster pump, so you can see, we attempted to shade the bottom right corner of that map. So this is the furthest reaches of our system. We have the distribution centers that are there to pump out, maintain a consistent pressure. But we really need some additional water pressure and capacity to support the growth that's going on in that Murphy Road corridor. And so we are going to be constructing a new inline booster that basically is going to be right in line with the water mains and help increase the pressure and get it down to that farthest area, Farrell Road and Hartman. It's going to rely on a 16-inch main that's currently there. It'll have four pumps, two to address peak demands, and then two to address fire flow demands. So in the event there is a fire and additional capacity is needed on that line, those will kick in and support what is going on there. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to John Corwin for a rate case update and some of the other items we have going on.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Mayor Smith, Vice Mayor Wade, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to talk. Andrew got to highlight all the cool projects we're doing. I get to talk about the rate case, which I'll keep very high level since we just talked about it just a few months ago. But just really, a few updates since we last spoke. Since then, we have had our hearing set for Q4 of this year. So we're kind of on track or the schedule that we anticipated. Additionally, this month, customer notices are going out in their bills, and so customers will get information on the rate proposal. Also, opportunities to participate in the process, public hearings, things like that. So keep an eye out in your bill for that information this month as well. It also provides information, such as the bill impact. The timeline, again, pretty much on schedule for what we anticipated. We did submit the application in early March. We've received sufficiency. Basically, the ACC has said, yes, you submitted everything you needed to submit. And, you know, we sit here today, May 20th. Again, we anticipate nothing changing until probably the middle of next year. So likely a decision and vote on the rate application at that time. Transitioning over to water resources, a few highlights there. The first, Andrew talked a little bit about our designation of assured water supply. Again, that's the permitted amount of water that the Department of Water Resources allows us to use on an annual basis, based on, you know, the volume of water that's available in the aquifer. And so currently, we're using about 9,000 of that 23,000 acre feet of available water. And again, as we recharge, we will continue to add to that, that volume of water available. On the conservation side, we continue to see very high utilization by customers of our conservation tools. So we see about an 81% utilization rate of our customer portal, which is great. That's an opportunity for customers to get leak alerts, find out if there is an issue with their irrigation, you know, before it turns into a large bill. So last year, we sent out about 14,000 leak alerts, and we estimate that's about 15.2 million gallons saved by customers that they otherwise would have had, you know, on their bill and would have had to pay. So we love it when people participate in it. It's a free service. It's available to everybody for, you know, to help them out. And then a new program that's coming online, actually, next month. Jake Linder King and his team, they did a great job. They went out and got a grant to help fund this program. But we're going to be able to offer customers a turf rebate program. So basically, if customers apply for the program and they're accepted, they'll get a dollar rebate for every square foot of turf that they remove from their yard. And so that goes live June 1st. We have an advertisement that's going to be promoting that this month as well, going out to the city. So additionally, on the water recharge front, we continue to try to progress the recharge project that we've had in the pipeline for the last couple of years, again, at the facility right next to the Global Water Center. And so again, that's a partnership with the city and some grant funding to help bring that project together. And so what that'll be is, again, two or three percolation basins. It will take excess recycled water, primarily in the wintertime. We'll put it in those basins, and then it'll percolate back into the aquifer for use into the future. And it also adds to our designation, so we can accommodate additional growth within the city. We anticipate that could recharge up to 400 to 600 million gallons per year. The other great thing is it takes that water out of the wash, which we know is not necessarily a popular thing. And like I said, it adds to our long-term water supplies. And then we'll also add some signage and educational elements, too, to that facility as well. Again, it's moving at kind of a slow pace. Hopefully, we can get it going faster, but it is in the works. And then lastly, I just always like to highlight our customer assistance program. Again, that program offers customers up to $700 in assistance per year if they qualify in one of those eligibility criteria categories. The Salvation Army, they've been great to work with. They help administer that program. They're at Global Water every Tuesday. So if you know of any customers that are in need, please send them our way. We want to get them the help that they need. So with that, that concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, John. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Lierman? Okay, very good. I have a couple.
Okay.
So I've talked with Ron and Chris often about this because there's a misunderstanding in regards to multifamily, and how does that impact our 100-year water supply? There are some people who think it just counts as one hookup. I don't believe that, but I would like to hear from you what the actual fact is.
Yeah, so the multifamily, the water that they use goes against our designation of assured water supply. So again, that water comes out of that. It's not, you know, there are some areas where people can kind of skirt the system, but here, that is not happening. So it's counted against that designation of assured water supply that's been approved by the Department of Water Resources.
Thank you, John. I agree. It's been used as a skirting the system in other areas. But I've made sure and clear with John, I mean, Ron and Chris, that I understand that perfectly, and that every gallon that's used within that multifamily is counted toward the 100-year water supply.
That is correct.
Very good. Okay. And then, just curious, in Sorrento, the 1.1 million gallon ability to pump, is that out of the same 100-year water supply? And if the answer is yes, which I think it is, just a brief explanation on how that helps.
Yeah, so it is, you know, all the wells that we operate and obtain water from do essentially count against the designation of assured water supply. That well specifically adds capacity to our system. So again, as Andrew talked about, it gives us capacity to serve more homes, but also redundancy in our system. So as we have to take, you know, all mechanical equipment you have to maintain, and so we can take them offline, do the maintenance on it. So, you know, we kind of set the terms of when it's offline, and it doesn't fail unexpectedly. So it gives us additional opportunities to properly maintain our assets in addition to the capacity it provides.
Very good. When you use the word "capacity" in your presentation, I just wanted to make sure we are delineating between 100-year water supply capacity and capacity for development. Two different things, but thank you. You cleared that up well. And then just feedback on what you've done for the odor. I have several residents who email me on a regular basis, and all of them have sent me recently emails talking about how happy they are with what Global Water has done. So thank you very much, and I appreciate you addressing those issues. I normally forward them on, so you know when they're coming, because you're like, "Mayor Smith, here she goes again." But thank you for addressing that. And then the alerts. I just want to draw everyone's attention to the alerts. They really work. My husband will be outside doing something. He'll walk in, and he goes, "Don't worry if you get one of those emails. I'm emptying the hot tub." And I'm like, "Okay," because I'll always be like, "Whoop, we have a leak again." And so he's always letting me know what he's doing. But they really work, and if you want to conserve water and understand what your bill's going to look like, you should sign up for those. Yes. Councilmember Lierman?
Thank you so much for your presentation, John. And 14,000 alerts is pretty impressive. That's saving a lot of money, so thank you for that. Can you talk a little bit about the federal funding for the groundwater recharge project? And how that's going, how that's progressing?
Yeah, so as I, you know, highlighted the project for the groundwater recharge next to the Global Water Center, that was kind of a combination grant application with, in coordination with the city. So I believe it was around $3 million, if I'm not mistaken, of grant funding to make that available. And then, again, that will help construct that facility, obtain the property. That will then add water resources to the city. So again, those water resources, while we kind of manage it, are able to use it as a, you know, resource for the city to continue to grow and continue to be sustainable from a water perspective.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Lierman. Counsel, any additional comments, questions? John, thank you very much. Great presentation. I think you provided a lot of information.
Thank you for the time. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. That'll take us to Agenda Item 8 dot 3, which is going to have a presentation, starting off with Rudy, and then passing it over to Danny Court.
Mayor, council members, what's going to be presented to you tonight is a housing assessment. If you recall, or if you've, obviously, you guys have been around and know the history of this, we started this housing assessment actually in 2017. At that time, the city definitely identified that there was a need to diversify our housing stock because in 2017, almost 25,000 of our housing stock was 99%, 99.9% of single-family residential. So we were definitely in somewhat of a dire need to definitely diversify our stock there. From that assessment, it definitely solidified staff's, you know, assumptions there. And 2019, City Council adopted the 2019 Housing Plan. And then recently, through legislation, it's now a requirement through all cities, I think, effective, I think, January of this past year, that all cities are required to do a five-year assessment and plan. And we were somewhat in the forefront of that. I commend our city for taking that forefront early on to identify that. And we actually procured CIP budget for this housing assessment and last year, fiscal year before. So we're somewhat ahead of the game and on top of it, because as any study, we want to make sure that that study is still up to date in nature. So we definitely kind of procured that assessment study this fiscal year to come back and see where we stand today in terms of our housing needs. And if we continue to understand if there is a housing issue out there, we hired Elliot Pollock and company to look at that information. And tonight, Danny Court, representing Elliot Pollock, will present you information on that. So.
Thank you, Rudy.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Glad to be with you again. I'm going to present a quick summary of the Housing Needs Assessment Report that hopefully you've all had a chance to see. that hopefully you've all had a chance to see and happy to answer any questions as we go through this. Real quickly on on data sources and limitations. Fortunately, Maricopa has grown to a population size where the US Census is now tracking demographic data on an annual basis, on a one-year basis. So you're getting some more up-to-date information from the census. You're still at a population threshold where they they're still actually suppressing some of that information. So throughout the report, you'll see a mixture of one-year census data and five-year census data, just based on what information is available for City of Maricopa. In addition to that, I will say, US Census is a great resource, a robust survey source for demographics, household composition, incomes, and things like that. They do also report on housing situation. But in a rapidly growing city like Maricopa, we're seeking after additional sources of information that are more temporal, more more up-to-date. We we ran into that issue when the League of Cities was trying to assist all other municipalities in submitting their reports using census data, using five-year census data. So, meaning they're taking an average from 2019 to 2023 and saying, this is what your housing situation looks like. That's that's certainly not the case. So we, you know, we searched after all available, you know, reliable information that's that's up-to-date on the housing market and will present that to you. It's probably no surprise to you all, City of Maricopa is the fastest-growing city in in Pinale County, also the the largest city, incorporated city in in Pinale County today. So 2024 official population estimates of 73,300. There's also a seasonal population here. We we estimate that by looking at the housing units reported by census that are seasonal housing units and applying a a population, a household population to that. So through several months of the year, your population grows by by 3,000 to 4,000 with those seasonal residents. Population projections, we spent quite a bit of time on this through Rudy's request of looking at kind of a sensitivity analysis or looking at some scenarios here. We start with the Maricopa Association of Governments' population forecast, which was produced in 2023, using 2022 as the last last estimates of population. This is also the official state projection. So Maricopa Association of Governments' projection for Maricopa is also the state of Arizona's official projection for the city. The city outgrew MAG's projection in the last two years already. So what we've done is we re-benched to 2024's estimated population and then adopted MAG's percentage growth going forward. So you'll see an adjustment, if you see MAG's official forecast, you'll see that these numbers deviate. But basically showing by by 2029, resident population in Maricopa of nearly 94,000 residents versus 73,000 today. Our 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 analysis of that forecast is that we we do believe that MAG's forecast is is overly conservative. So we offer two additional scenarios for for population forecast here. So blue line you see there, we'll call that the baseline, but that is MAG's forecast there. Basically, from from the writing of the report earlier this year through 2028, you don't see much deviation in the growth forecast, but it's it's beyond there where you see MAG's forecast kind of is an inflection point to flatter growth, whereas we just don't see any evidence of Maricopa slowing growth in in the foreseeable future. So through our 15-year forecast, we do show some, a little bit more conservative growth beyond 2030. So we're basically starting at an average growth rate of 6%, which is what you're experiencing now and over the last few years, to about 4% growth 2030 through 2039. When we spoke to your economic development folks, they said we were overly conservative. They said this this place is about to boom. So in in considering their forecast, we took it down by about half. But that's that's the optimistic scenario you see there is what would be the impact of these large-scale economic development projects that are being planned today, that that haven't broken ground, but but are being planned and and could come into the future? If we see that kind of growth, if we see large-scale employment growth in the city, then you should expect additional demand for housing. So that green line is representative of bringing in those economic development projects and seeing significant employment growth in the city. These are the the projects that we're referring to. You you have already have commercial development underway. Again, as the as of the writing of the report, about 200,000 square feet of additional commercial development was under construction. We estimate that'll bring in about 400 onsite jobs upon completion. And then the major the major projects, the Smart Rail Park, current estimates of 13,000 onsite jobs and the U of A area of innovation, again, onsite jobs, a little over 11,000 jobs. So 25,000 new jobs could come to the city. That would be, again, a huge boon to the city. After driving down the 347 again at at 5:00 PM, I hope that all Maricopa residents fill those jobs so that they can they can skip that commute. Back to the back to the census data, you know, we're trying to match household composition, age, income to affordable housing types in this in this report. So starting off, looking at household composition, a very young population here, younger than the county and statewide averages. That's a large presence of children, especially children, you know, 10 to 19 years of age. 73% of all households are family households, you know, you know, either either families, husband, wife, or families with children. But we also have some non-family households here, and nearly 5,000 households are are single-person households living alone. And when you consider the housing stock being mostly single-family development, three-to-five bedroom, you may potentially have a mismatch of of households to to housing type there. I also want to call out there, the we do have a young population here, but there's also over 15% of residents in Maricopa are 65 years or older. And we also still have, we have an absence of senior living, independent living, assisted living, all all those kinds of of things, which we'll we'll show you in the recommendations. But the expectations are over time that that population will continue to age and and the recommendation is to allow housing types here that they are able to age in place. I do want to say quickly, I I gave a presentation in Prescott Valley, similar for a housing needs assessment, and showing this this information here, a young man, his eyes lit up and he raised his hand and he said, "Why don't we just move all the old people out of their houses so that the young people can have houses?" And and that went over really, really well in that in that community. But we'll show you some of these these household types here. Household size, really interesting, your renter households are actually larger than the owner-occupied household. So there's larger families renting homes in Maricopa. And and I'll point out too here, even with the 2023 one-year estimate, we're not picking up all the new apartments that have been built in the city. So this census data will not reflect all the apartments that are coming in. And I'll talk about the implications or how that will differ. But we expect those household sizes to to start to come down as as renters occupy these these newer apartment units. Incomes, very good, very solid income in in the city. Median income is 83,600. Over the last five years, median income's grown by about 20%. So on on a good pace, it's that's that's underperformed like the statewide averages, but but your median household incomes are are higher than the state averages as well. So looking at housing types, this is again back to census data showing 96% in in one unit, single-family detached homes. And you see there, when you go down the line, your apartment stock is not being reflected in this in this census data. The permit activity that was supplied by by the city, you know, you see the start, starting to finally see the blue there, which is multifamily development. So as, you know, we entered this high-interest rate environment in 2022 and we started to see a decrease in single-family development and demand, the multifamily development in the city really picked up. And you actually saw, you know, basically since the boom of of 2006, kind of all-time highs over the last, from the last 15 years because of that multifamily development that came online. So when we add in, there's 1,300, now there's 1,300 apartments in Maricopa that have been completed. And so that basically represents now 5% of your total housing stock, multifamily development, multifamily product is. And then you've got a lot under construction as well. So as those ones that are under construction are built, you your multifamily stock will represent about 11 and 1/2% of your total housing stock. So still well under greater Phoenix average, but but increasing at a pretty rapid pace there. You also have a lot of renters, obviously, in single-family homes because we didn't have apartments before. And and again, the attached units aren't being aren't being reflected in this in this data. So when when we look at CoStar, which is which which tracks commercial development and multifamily development, they reported 936 out of the 1,300 were were occupied. So basically at at about 30% vacancy, again, as of the writing of the report in January. And then the rest of the, so and the rest of the renters in the in the single-family homes and manufactured homes. Price appreciation, so I I showed you, you know, median incomes increased by about 20% over the last five years. However, single-family home prices rose 58% in the city. So we're now up to an average of 365,500. Peak pricing actually occurred in 2022. So we've actually seen a decline in overall house prices over the last two years. However, that was paired with increasing interest rates. So it's actually more expensive to afford a home at these lower prices in 2024 as it was if you were to purchase that higher-priced home in 2022. So going from a 4 and 1/2% interest rate to a 6.7% interest rate. So so, you know, as of as of 2022, a a home at the at those prices required about an $82,000 household income. And today, at the lower prices, but the higher interest rates, it's a $93,500 salary. So if you bought your home before 2020, congratulations, because that was that was the inflection point. This, I think, as as Rudy mentioned, this this housing supply issue is a nationwide issue. It's it's throughout the state, nobody's been immune to it. And really, when you look at it, I'll kind of show you a a couple more, a couple more here. But here's the new home market in Maricopa, in Maricopa's market. So it's kind of a scatter plot of a range of what they're offering in terms of floor plan. So at the at the smallest, you know, just under 1,000 square feet, up to a 4,000 square foot home, prices ranging from 278,000 up to the the high end of 575,000. When you look at kind of where the averages are, you know, basically most of these production homes are being offered between 1,400 and 3,000 square feet with a price range between 325,000 and 450,000. So when you look back at, you know, what are these, what are these, you know, required household incomes at these levels? Again, at at a 6 and 6 and 1/2% interest rate, $84,000 to afford that $325,000 home and about 116,000 to to afford that $450,000 home. A question we get off asked often is, what if we just get, what if we can get these lower interest rates? What if we get the lower interest rates back, is our housing problem gone? So we've we've calculated that throughout the report. So again, so if we get down to like a 5% interest rate, that does offer a lot more affordability. So the new household requirement would be between 70,000 and 97,000. So it doesn't solve the problem completely, but it would be welcome relief. Unfortunately, you know, we're quoting 6.7% interest rates in a lot of these calculations and our mortgage interest rates have only edged higher over the year. So we're we're now, we're now, you know, basically floating around 7% interest rates today. So it's 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 degraded a bit. When we look at the apartment inventory, again, 1,300 units completed, which you did not have any apartments before 2022. Two of those seven communities are are affordable, meaning government subsidized, rent restricted, offered at, you know, 60% or less of the area median income, a great type of housing stock to have for the for your residents. Again, as the writing of the report, 30% vacancy. I expect that higher vacancy rate to continue because you've got so much coming online as well. It's not a bad thing. It's 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 actually going to help with affordability. You're going to see really high concessions going on, competing for those tenants. So a lot of communities right now offering one to two months of free rent just to just to attract tenants to their to their projects. But back to the housing stock, you know, average rents ranging between 900 and 1,900. When we look at who can afford, comfortably afford these types of units, we're looking at the unit mix. Very few studio units, most of your unit mix is one-twos and threes. So basically, we're starting off at about a $50,000 salary, can can comfortably afford a one-bedroom apartment. And that goes up as the as the apartment size increases to about 70,000. So very interesting, you see kind of the the floor for homeownership in Maricopa is about 70,000 to 75,000 and goes up. And now we've got an apartment stock that can accommodate $50,000 to $75,000. So we're we're building to a much larger range of of incomes, of household incomes. And again, in terms of affordability, so spending 30% or less of your household income on on your housing costs. The pipeline is robust, you're basically going to triple your housing, your apartment stock over the next 12 to 18 months. So 2,600 under construction, that will be added to the 1,300 and then nearly 900 more planned, approved, but but haven't pulled a permit or haven't begun construction. Three of those apartment communities are offered as affordable. So again, adding about 700 units to that affordable stock. So that, again, we're now accommodating those households that are making maybe $50,000 or less, finding an affordable housing unit for for those residents. As I said, apartment absorption and vacancy, it's it's been good. You know, CoStar reported 600 apartments were occupied over the last 12 months. So if you stayed at that kind of of burn rate, you know, it would take about four years to to completely absorb what's under construction today, what's what's currently vacant and under construction. And then if you add in those that are also planned, those 900 units planned, you've got a couple more years. So you've got a pretty good runway of of housing inventory, apartment inventory for for future growth. And then these these slides kind of go through what's our what's our future demand? So going back to, we've got those scenarios for for population forecasts, they they differ dramatically. So we're we're basically saying, you know, the city's going to grow anywhere between 40 and 90,000 people over the next 15 years. If we if if those units are occupied at current household sizes, you're just over three persons per household, we're we're looking at, you know, at at the low end, you know, needing 12,000 units, 12,000 to 30,000 units. If, because we're seeing these apartments come online, we're actually expecting average household sizes to to come down. So if we start to, if we start to move toward like the Phoenix metro average of 2.6 persons per household, you know, that will increase housing unit demand based on your population. So again, a wide range, but another 14,000 to 35,000 housing units needed just to accommodate future growth. There's also a segment of the population that are overburdened by their housing costs in the city. So this is not, this is not demand based on growth, but demand based on affordability. Over 50% of renters in Maricopa pay more than 30% of their income toward housing. So that's 1,800 renter households that it's considered unaffordable to them. They're overburdened by their rent. 19% or just under 700 households are paying more than 50% of their household income toward rent. So more than one out of two paychecks per month just to pay for their housing cost. Severely rent-overburdened households is a leading indicator of homelessness, especially if we were to run into an economic downturn. So those are the households that are most vulnerable to to potential homelessness and and certainly something to look at. When you look across, again, this is, you you're basically right at the statewide average. You're a little bit more than than the county average in terms of renter overburdened. And 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 slightly under, when you look at the the severely overburdened paying more than 50%. So again, it's, this is a state and national issue that we're dealing with and and Maricopa's not immune to it. When you look at the owner's side, we have about 30% of owners that are also overburdened by their housing costs. So the gap, the affordability gap is what we call it, is is about 7,800 households in Maricopa that are overburdened by their housing costs, whether they're renters or owners. Now, again, because this is census- Now, again, because this is census data, we have not seen the effect of this new apartment stock. So there is a possibility, and it'll be interesting to see over the next few years, as as these apartments are built and occupied, at what kind of effect this is this this can have on on the affordability metrics. You may have some some owners that are overburdened that that might see that rental option as as something that's attractive. Or you might have renters in single family homes that, you know, those rents just keep going up and and a one bedroom unit might suit them better and and it's more affordable. So it'll be interesting to see how that trend progresses with this new apartment stock. When we're trying to match this this overburdened to to an appropriate housing type, this is the breakdown of those renters and owners that are overburdened by their by their income range. So we've got four hundred households earning less than twenty thousand dollars a year, overburdened by rent, and and nearly five hundred owner households in the same income category, overburdened by their housing costs. That is a tricky income category. That's basically public housing. You know, do you want to be in the housing business as a city and provide public housing? Or there are programs, you know, by nonprofits that are, you know, trying to address this demographic. We've seen a great program in Chandler, very small, but trying to match roommates, you know, someone with the house with an extra room, matching a roommate to to finding a room or something like that. So it it it's an innovative, it takes a lot of innovation in this in this income category. The federal dollars are are very slim and and potentially even less as, you know, in in this administration. So limited federal dollars to to address it. But, you know, that's basically the only housing type that that can address that income range. When we get to the twenty to fifty thousand, this is where some of these, the low income housing tax credit projects, you're already getting several of those, sixty percent and less of of area median income. A lot of the projects are, you know, kind of right at the sixty percent AMI target. So as you see those proposals come in, maybe and ask a question, any any opportunity to address the thirty percent AMI, the forty percent AMI, the fifty percent AMI, because that's that's, you know, it's those are those are harder to finance. But there there might be a solution there to to encourage the inclusion of those lower income, those lower AMI ranges to address those those households. Now we get into the a little bit easier part, thirty-three hundred households earning between fifty and seventy-five. And and we're already seeing that, that the the private market rate apartments can addresses this need. These these units will be available and they will be affordable to that income range. And then we have fourteen hundred households earning more than seventy-five thousand. So on that's about two hundred and thirty renter households. So again, this could this could also be this mismatch of just overextending yourself in renting a single family home and now an apartment's available. And then there's a few more options, you know, on on the owner's side. So there's a a pretty good chunk there that is going to be accommodated by private market development at market rate pricing in the city based on your based on the rent levels and the and the home prices. So in in pretty good shape there. There was another request, too. There's this expectation of new jobs. Not a lot of great sources of information on 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 employment forecasts, especially for a city like Maricopa with such a small base of employment. But we looked at Lightcast. We're basically saying, ignore the the number of jobs that Lightcast is projecting because they basically said you're going to grow by a thousand jobs over the next five years. Nobody believes that. Everyone thinks you're going to blow right past that. But we wanted to look at kind of the mix of jobs, the types of the types of jobs in different industries, look at that mix of of what they're seeing, looking at their average earnings and saying, okay, if we're bringing these types of jobs in and these average, these are their average salaries, what's the right match to what's the proper housing type to match that demand? At high interest rates, we're basically looking at seventy-six percent renter to twenty-four percent owner based based on these based on these expected salaries. If we saw an interest rate reduction, we're basically about fifty fifty. So there's going to be a continued need for rental stock. There's going to be continued demand. I think, too, just broadly in Greater Phoenix, we're at an inflection point. We're going to see a lot more renters going forward. It's just it's just an economic reality that that when you look at salaries and you look at the the housing stock and affordability, I just think rental units are here to stay, and it's going to be a growing segment of our of our housing stock across the region. So so it's definitely a need, and and it provides an affordable option for, again, in this market, anyone earning between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is quite a bit of people. So we've got a few, one page, one or two pages of conclusions, and then I've got seven recommendations that take them or leave them, you know. But so just to just to summarize, we've had degrading degraded affordability conditions over the last five years across the region of the country. Maricopa is still very competitively priced. You are a value proposition throughout Greater Phoenix in in the types of new homes and resale homes that are that are available in the three hundred thousand dollar range and in the high two hundred thousand dollar range. It's just very rare, especially in Maricopa County. So very good, very competitively priced. It's a value proposition. You've got a healthy stock of ownership housing for anyone making seventy-five thousand dollars or more. You've now got multifamily housing and more coming online that that is going to accommodate anyone making between fifty and seventy-five. But we still have a third of our residents that are overburdened by their housing costs. So and and with this rapidly growing population, that's that's only likely to worsen if we don't if we don't keep up with the housing housing supply. So and also, you have an abundance of land. So there's there's really no issue in terms of where you're going to put those those new houses. So seven recommendations. These are all just basically housing types in terms of matching, matching to affordability, matching to the right to the right incomes. So first recommendation is to encourage small lot and attached ownership development. Condos and and townhomes is still not a residential asset class that you have in the city. So would love to see some more density. Density is how the private market addresses affordability. So smaller lot sizes, smaller smaller floor plans, smaller, you know, smaller units leads to more affordability. So again, this could be a great ownership option for anyone making less than a hundred thousand dollars. Allowing higher continuing to allow higher density rental products. So the single family rental, you know, the one and two story, single family rental products, townhomes, duplexes, traditional apartments, you know, keeping those in strategic areas along major roadways. Buffers to commercial and and employment areas are great. Again, we're addressing a critical income range of of young professionals and and younger families and 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 really, really across the board. So secondary dwelling units is accessory dwelling units has, you know, it's it's been a topic of conversation, a great way to increase housing supply without really without really affecting neighborhoods. So casitas and and providing small, affordable rental options in single family neighborhoods. Allowing manufactured homes. So you saw that there there's also been huge price increases in manufactured homes. There's also been great improvements in the aesthetic of manufactured homes. So I know that the city already has design guidelines. So, you know, adhering to those those design guidelines for manufactured home communities, but allowing those to come in. It's it's an affordable ownership option that's that that is still available. Continue to support the subsidized housing programs. Being a young city and and having, you know, now you're just getting an apartment stock and to already have the number of subsidized apartment communities that you have, you've already seen them, you know, they they look like traditional market rate communities. It's just it's a great option to continue to have. It really supports, you know, essential workers, police, teachers, firefighters, critical service workers. So continue to support those when they come in. And and also, you know, you don't have much control over this, but it support the expansion of government voucher programs such as Housing Choice vouchers and things like that. Again, any 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 possible resource we have to to address lower income households and getting them into an affordable housing unit is is really paramount. And then finally, as I alluded to before, supporting housing products that that are targeted to senior living, allow age and place options and allow active adult senior apartments, independent living, assisted living, memory care facilities. So this is, again, another asset class that we haven't seen yet in the city and would love to see that so that you 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 provide a a suitable housing option for for anyone of any age that that wants to continue to live in the city. And you've made it to the end, and I'd love to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Danny. Counselor, what questions do you have?
Mayor, Mayor Counsel, before we jump into questions, I just want to add a caveat there. On the recommendations that Danny has presented from L E D Pollock, we can use those recommendations as part of our next step in our general plan as we will have a housing element in there to consider as a topic of discussions, which recommendations we'll move forward on as part of that process as well. So just F one.
Very good. Thank you, Rudy. Councilwoman Lerman.
For your presentation, I really appreciate it. I appreciate your comments regarding the needs of our senior community, and I'm really looking forward to when we can have more options for them. And I watched your presentation in the P and Z meeting, and you had also talked about large lot homes. Could you talk about that just a little bit?
That yeah, that was actually a question that was posed by a a commissioner. And it's it's for us, it's just it would be a great thing to talk about in your housing plan. It's when when we focus on a housing needs assessment, it is all about affordability. So if if you're trying to attract a wealthier, a wealthier households and you want to to find a place for your your CEOs or your 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 upper management or things like that, it's a great way to put, you know, if you if you want a place for them, that's a great option to discuss that in the housing plan. We're talking about affordability, you know, so it's we're just kind of limited in scope in terms of looking at those types of options. But it certainly should be part of any plan if if that's what you want.
Thank you. And I just wanted to share, your presentation is very close to my heart because my parents used to live here in Maricopa, and my mom passed away in two thousand and twelve. And my dad really didn't want to live in his home anymore by himself, and he didn't really have any options here in Maricopa. And so he lived with me for a little bit, and then he moved to Texas because there really was nowhere for him to live here. And so that was unfortunate. And then my daughter graduated from Maricopa High School in two thousand and twenty, and there was nowhere for her to live here either, and she definitely didn't want to live with me. And so she moved to Hawaii. And so I lost both my dad and my daughter. And I I don't know if there was housing here. Maybe they wouldn't have moved. I don't know. But I think for families to have that full cycle of life housing options is really critical. I don't have any family here in Maricopa anymore. And so this really impacts our lives at a very deep level. And my dad didn't want to leave Maricopa. He had his whole life here, his friends, everything. But he really felt like he didn't have a choice. And so we're giving our community choices and options, and we're making them feel welcome, like they belong here. I think there's there was, before we built apartments, a perception of there were people that really didn't belong here. If you weren't can't afford a single family home, then you didn't belong in our community, and that's just not true. And so I'm really grateful that we're welcoming lots of different types of families and people into our community. So I really appreciate your presentation. Thank you very much.
If I could quickly plug, your your economic development folks get that. And I it's surprising. Most most economic development professionals kind of stay in the lane of employment and commercial. And they said, we want to bring in high wage jobs, and we understand that when you bring in one high wage job, you create two more lower wage jobs, and we need housing for for every worker. So I I applaud that, and and I I applaud the vision of keeping housing in your economic development toolkit.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Lerman. Additional questions, comments? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it very much. I'm I'm just curious, in your realm and in your, excuse me, thinking, in your realm, in your discussions, what is affordable housing?
By definition, it is a household spending no more than thirty percent of their household income on their housing cost. So that's for a renter, that would be your rent and utilities. And for an owner, it's, you know, mortgage, property tax, homeowner's insurance, a couple of other couple of other items. But that's the standard definition that that we adhere to.
So that's the standard you operate under?
Yes.
Where do you see the community? Can you give an example of a community that meets that that standard?
There are there are none. I mean, that, yeah, so you shouldn't be afraid or you shouldn't be saying, we need to get that number down to zero. That would be great. But it it's always been an issue. And again, it's 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 just been exacerbated over the last, basically since COVID. It's been exacerbated. So we're talking about a national issue of an undersupply of housing and 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 wages not keeping up with the housing costs. So it's really been an epidemic. We haven't seen any community that has solved it. But I will say about seventy percent of our workload right now is housing needs assessments and strategies across the state of Arizona. So everybody, I think, it's on everybody's radar. And and we've had a range of reception to whether or not you want to try to tackle the issue. So there are still communities that say, yeah, that's a problem, and I hope that the communities around me solve that problem by building apartments, but not not here. You gotta you gotta earn the 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 right to live in our community, things like that, that really is a slap in the face to our essential workers that that need a place to stay. I'm I'm a father, and I see the same same issue. I I think the the game has changed for our children. I I don't see how they are able to, even if they graduate with a four year degree and and get a good job. It, you know, literally ten years ago, a fifty thousand dollar salary, you're a homeowner across the across Greater Phoenix, and and now it's a six figure salary. So it's that's why, you know, we push for private market solutions because there's limited government dollars. And and when we say private market solution, we say density and and maybe lowering our 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 burdens on the on the developers that want to come in and and build something that's affordable, giving them some breaks on architectural design elements or things like that to to really just say, you know, we want we want to solve this issue, and and here's our plan for it.
We just broke ground on a on the vision that is affordable, considered affordable housing. I'm really curious about what it's going to look like at close to completion or completion and whether or not it answers the call of the need for affordable housing. But when we ended our initial housing assessment, Rudy helped me with this, what this, four, no, excuse me, six years, six, seven years ago?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen. We were talking about the fact that we had no multifamily housing, no affordable housing at all. Now, most of the time at the at the grocery store, I get people arguing with me about there's too many apartments. You know, so trying to find that medium that works for them and works for us is difficult.
You could throw me up as a human shield. Say Danny Court said that's not true. It it really is not true. It it probably feels like a lot of apartments when you had no apartments. Your last plan actually talked about a strategy of potentially incentivizing develop apartment developers to come in, offering to to support and incentivize them. You've now proven the market, and and it's a difficult thing to do. How do you build your first apartment in a community that has none? But someone did it, and now you've proven the market. There is no need for incentives to for for apartment developers. And again, I just, you know, I, you know, just just watch the absorption. I, you know, just watch the absorption and 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 see how those fill up because it probably does feel like a lot. And and we are, you know, as a as an M S A, two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five, huge wave of apartment development and and probably in excess of what we need, but it's transitory. We we really expect, you know, another two years, and that stock is going to be that that stock's going to be absorbed, and we're going to be seeing where's where where's the next apartments coming from. So I I think you'll experience a lot of of healthy absorption. I mean, especially those subsidized communities, literally, I mean, you're talking about a a matter of months, those will all be fully occupied. There's just unlimited demand for for that housing type.
I hope you're right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any additional comments, questions? Yes, Councilwoman Marsh.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Rick Williams to bring a copy of this report to our next general plan update meeting. I think this is good, good information for covering the our design. I think this is good, good information for covering the, our desire to bring in low and mid-income people to Maricopa. But I think also we should be considering, considering the more affluent people, people who are escaping California and selling, you know, one and a half, $2 million homes and they can bring that equity here. Also executives at Intel 13 miles away pulling in $350,000 a year and more. We want to attract them to Maricopa as well. So thanks for covering the affordable side. We need to discuss the affluent side as well and, and the middle between it at the next general plan meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marsh. Councilmember Nora, you probably know full well that we need homes where doctors will enjoy residing. Yeah, that's a big need as well. We could probably think of a multiple of different careers where that's needed. Danny, thank you so very much. We appreciate what you've done and the study that you've done and the information that you've shared.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
All right, that'll move on to agenda item 8 dot 4. And this is going to be a presentation by Josh Bowman. For the record, Councilmember Manfredi and Councilmember Lerman are recusing themselves.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. I thank the opportunity to share a little bit about this potential land lease. So just as an overview, the city owns 1.6 acres of land on the northeast corner of Mercado and Main Street. This parcel was originally picked up as a strategic effort to clean up some of the blight in the area and also with a goal down the road to redevelop the area. So this is the parcel we're talking about, highlighted in red. The city put out a invitation for bids, received a bid back from Open Arms Vocational Living Center. The plan that they proposed is to put forward about 1,500 square feet to offer housing and vocational support for males 18 and older aging out of the foster care system. The plan for this center would be job training, mental health, resources, mentorship and things along those lines. I think the Call to the Public did a great job of explaining the, the need for this. Understand this is not typically something that economic development talks a lot about, but this project has an opportunity to add some redevelopment into an area on a small lot that doesn't necessarily have great other opportunities where this is able to meet the need within the community, have a potential for making large impacts on individuals' lives as well as the community overall and redevelop an area that would be really great to see some additional activity in.
Thank you very much. Before we go to council questions, I do have the speaker card for Tori Anderson. Would you like to hold off and see if there are any questions? Okay, very good. Counsel, do you have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Gettle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just have a couple. Brother, as we look at this, this amazing project and what it's going to bring into our city, did we have any additional response, respondents to the IFB?
We did not for this particular IFB.
This project here. And maybe Mr. Bowman, you could talk a little bit about how our taxpayer funds are being protected by this specific project, looking at the, the lease agreement and the various ways that we are making sure that the city's taxes are being well accounted for, protected and help us, put us a little bit at ease with this project, if you would.
Yeah, happy to. And so again, we follow this process where we put out a, a bid for opportunities that can redevelop this area. Understand with sometimes with redevelopment, there is, folks have got to come in with an idea that says, we think we can make this work. And it is not always the highest priority for developers to come in and redevelop areas. And so when we can find something that meets a need within the community and is also able to, I mean, in this case, the leases is a nominal amount, but is able to, to redevelop an area that can then potentially spur on other development. And that, at that point would be able to add some additional tax revenue and things along those lines.
That sounds wonderful. I'm, I am very excited for this project to come in and we have this vacant property that the, the city has picked up over the years. Right now, it's just sitting there not being used, not adding any value to the neighborhood or to our community. And having Open Arms Vocational Living come in and, and turn something amazing into this, from this piece of property, I think is a great benefit to the city. My understanding too, the option to purchase this, this land will more than compensate the city for the price that we paid for the lot to begin with.
Correct.
And so taxpayer funds are being protected on, on all ends in this deal. So thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, and I think it's that, that spurring on, that jumping to the next projects that, you know, again, from economic development is really exciting, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gettle. Councilmember Marsh.
Yes, Josh, how many people can live there?
So again, at this point, they don't have the, the site plan for exactly what that will look like. Those will come later. It is not going to be a huge project as we heard some of the, you know, Call to the Public, whether this meets the need for all of the youth transitioning out of the foster care program is probably not likely, but this would be a good test case to see how that will go. And so the exact number of how many that is, I think is to be determined.
Sounds like a good beginning.
I, I think that's where it will be, is, is a nice start to say, how does this work?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marsh. Yes, Vice Mayor.
So is, excuse me, I'm sorry. Is it my understanding that the property is already purchased or it is to be purchased as, as a part of this process here?
So this will be a lease, a 10-year lease with an option to purchase.
Okay, all right.
So they can continue with the lease if that's the way that the, the group decides to do it or will have an option to purchase that again, at the price that is more than what we've paid for it.
I may have missed it, but is there some documentation on the project as far as the agreements that have been agreed upon?
Yeah, so in, in the lease agreement, you'll see that, that's in there. So they have 24 months to start vertical construction. And so that gives them some time to do some planning in there. Again, in Heritage District, this is, there is some additional challenges to make the site viable. So we work with the group to say, okay, what is a reasonable time to be, be able, how are you getting up into vertical construction? And not too tight that it's unreasonable, but not too long that we don't see something out of this and we want to see a program that comes along and helps this, this population.
Is there a plan for an appraisal, because you can get a rental appraisal?
We do not have an appraisal on this land, this is more than what we purchased the lot for.
Okay.
And we have a pretty good idea of where, where we're coming in at that line.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Quick question, first of all, I want to say this is, it's been said during the Call to the Public, this is a great team. I mean, we, and just knowing that we have four, five, six other nonprofits that are not even represented here tonight to pull this all together is amazing. So I think it can be done and I think it's a great asset for our community and to this area as well. My question is, going along with Councilmember Gettle, I'm always wanting to make sure we're protecting taxpayer dollars. And I know we do have some contracts where we've sold land that if the land reverts back to the city, we have to pay for the improvements that they've made or compensate. Okay, okay, in this property, the way that I read, I just wanted to make that clear. In this property, the way that I read it is that whatever is done to improve the property, if they end up not purchasing it as per the contract, the city is not paying for the improvements that have been made. And in fact, if there's a building there, the city would now own the building. I just wanted you to clarify that so that we make sure we're protecting taxpayer funds.
Thank you, Mary, apologies, my head shaking.
That's okay, I know, I know, you're confusing me, I'm like, wait a second, I know we do have contracts like that.
Right, in this case, that's not, not the case.
Very good, thank you. Additional comments, questions?
But there are an annual motion to approve.
Okay.
In a second for me.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second. I just want to give the speaker card one more opportunity, is there anything you wanted to add? Okay, very good. So I have a motion in a second, any additional comments from the council? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries, congratulations. And, yes, it's worth a clap. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. Thank you for being here tonight.